Is this a work session?
This is a work session.
But I don't have the agenda for this one either.
Do you?
We have email.
You don't have that.
That's next week. It's just, I have an email, there's not a whole lot on it.
Yeah, yeah.
Work sessions, should we send up there? Alright. Do we hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
Hold on, we're making it up. On our, on our, there it is. Okay, I make a motion to approve or adopt the agenda as presented.
I second.
Motion to make a second in favor?
Aye.
We'll go to new business, we'll work on the lodging tax. Make phone calls, we have to teach the needs of Oregon cities. It should be on record yet. And, all of them qualify except for the funds to assist supporting the executive director position for the organization. The other, the one I had questions about with the two of our RVs, because the county is the one that collects the lodging tax fund and not us. So that's why I was curious if that actually qualified. Why would it come out of the city?
Legally, you guys can do it, but you don't have to. Again, it's a policy determination. If you guys want to make that a, something that you can consider, you can. You don't have to, that's up to you, you guys. There's nothing illegal about it. I mean, you can help anybody tourism related, it's going to be tourism related for our area. It's just tourism related, the whole thing. So, Lake County and Lakeview have connections that you could do if you wanted to. But if the council in its policy role wants to go on a policy standpoint on that, they can't. So it's up to the council as far as...
I don't have a problem with it because there are, all those people are going to be in here buying groceries and food anyway in town. So, I, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, so, we'll vote on all this at the next meeting, but...
What we need to do is really establish guidelines, and that's really what we need to get through now.
We'll have a regular work session just on that.
I think you might need to, because I think you've got pending question, but I think that would be a good idea, just to kind of get a criteria. As long as it's tourism or economic development related, and you're in that realm, you guys can then look at, you know, what you're looking for submitting, submittees. You can have a rule thing, have a part of your application. You guys are fully within your power to do that, as long as it meets those, that general purpose.
Right, and we definitely need to do an application process, because we're okay in a lot of this stuff with no paper trail.
Right, and again, to me, it makes more sense to have the application, so you've got some background. In case somebody does decide to challenge it, you can say, "Look, we gave full hearing, it was on the agenda, you didn't show up." There's, it's going to put this issue in a lot better place.
So, it's my understanding that was the purpose of this meeting, as far as to discuss an application, what we want on it, and the guidelines. Is that not what this meeting was for?
I believe you guys were going to be discussing the specific ones you got, and it was a time for them to come in and make their pitch.
That's what I thought it was.
I thought it was establishing guidelines, because we kind of keep jumping the gun, and we need to just take the time and...
You can't really impose guidelines, though, retroactively to a group that's already going in.
No, I understand that.
They need to go forward.
Yeah, so, I mean, can we, can we not do both?
We talked about it, but we can't vote, or we can't do anything about it, especially without Sandra and...
It'll have to be next Tuesday maybe.
Yeah, I know we can't vote on it, guys, that's my question. Can we not discuss the guidelines, and what we want to set as the guidelines?
Okay.
I'm not prepared to do it, because I haven't looked at it.
I think, I think what we need to do is, the, what, I don't know if I'd like to...
And I would also suggest, if you're going to do that, make it a public hearing as well, so you can invite all the stakeholders to come in. So they can give you guys some, you don't have to. But, it's something you've had, that it is kind of precedent to what this county, what the city has done. You know, things like with the marijuana tax, things that we're using, things like that, that's, the city has done that, town has done that in the past, so...
So I guess, I didn't, I didn't have any misunderstanding of what was allowed or not allowed. All of those were allowed, technically, under tourism. I guess there was no confusion there for me.
My question is, we're, two of our RVs in the county?
Yes.
Alright, what about all these other county businesses that put in for that, they're going to come to us, asking for money?
Well, they certainly could, it depends on what our guidelines say.
But, that's county, that's not state.
No, I understand, I, I understand exactly. I'm not arguing in favor or against, but that's why we need to establish those guidelines. Because technically, anybody in the county has a right. Yes, there's county money. For instance, the fairgrounds receives county money. We could give them a portion like the county does, or we could set aside 30% of our 70 for advertising. 30% for, you know, something else.
Point of order, councilwoman Taylor, want to remember, the counties is unrestricted.
Yes, I know that, yes.
So that, so they, they have a lot more flexibility with what we do, because their tax was put in before some of the restrictions. So, they're able to do more. Not that the fairgrounds wouldn't qualify in some aspects, but it gets a little more complicated.
Yeah, no, I, I understand, I know they're splitting everything. We just need, that's where we need to, you know, all of these are totally allowable. We need to set the guidelines, so that it's just a little more simplified process, so we don't have somebody coming in knowing if they meet those guidelines or not.
Right, so we don't have this argument every time.
Pretty much, yeah, and that's why I thought we were doing the guidelines, I mean, I have...
Do we have a legal description of what's allowed?
I have tons.
Yeah, the legal description is...
Everybody should have a copy of that.
We've all read it, I guess.
Yeah, I think, though, we distributed, when we first passed this, we distributed LOC guidelines of lodging tax and everything else.
Right.
What you guys are establishing is what you're interested in seeing from individual submissions. And again, that doesn't also stop you from doing, if you guys, like a particular project, but let's say the town wanted to buy a visitor center or something along those lines, something very specific, that doesn't hamstring you guys from doing that. You're just trying, my understanding is you guys want guidelines for individual submissions from the public of...
Well, so people get an idea of what they're applying for, because you only get somebody out there that's not sure, so they apply anyway, and if they have guidelines, they can say, "Well, yeah, I don't really fit these guidelines."
For example, you know, I mean, we have private businesses that are requesting funds. Is that something we're going to make a habit out of, you know, are we going to put that in there? Or are we going to do nonprofits only? Are we gonna...
Well, I'm going to tell you the guidance, if you're thinking on start discussing that, you're going to be taking this apart piece by piece, and then, we're going to be here for probably at least two hours.
Yeah, sometimes it takes work.
And we, we don't have that kind of time today.
I definitely don't.
Well, I don't either, but, but that's what we need to figure out, is we need to figure out. I mean, I don't have any question whether or not any of those are legal, or not legal under the tourism.
Well, right, you know, and one wants to, looking for an executive director funding that one.
I necessarily have a problem with it, from my standpoint, but again, it is a little more in the bubble than the other ones, because LCP doesn't just do tourism. So that is, I think, it would pass muster, but it is something that could be challenged, and that's kind of the... But again, it comes down to a policy determination of what you guys want to do, all, as well, whether it fits within what you guys are wanting to as well. And my suggestion is, without the full council here, it might be better to...
So, I'm interested in knowing why LCP would say that, that wasn't, that wasn't, wouldn't fit in the guidelines, because LCP is a Main Street program, and the, the purpose of the Main Street programs are downtown revitalization, economic development, community development, and most of the, the work that the executive director would be engaged in are, all of the projects that they are engaged in are in regard to tourism, economic development, which is a part of the lodging tax. Because I researched that.
I'm going by what the Lake of Oregon cities said.
Yeah, so we, so we...
I have the same answer that Ginger has, and I have numerous documentation. Now, I'm not saying I'm for or against it, but, I'm a facts person. And we could pay a, a town employee to administer those funds even. That's within that realm. This is very similar as an executive director...
Because it's, remember what we talked about last time, it's strategic, long-term planning.
Yes.
And, you do just have some more evidence, she, she just told you that that's, now, you might need to put some restrictions on it, that that $25,000 is going to be going towards a part of her salary where she's do, you may want to put some strings on it to make totally sure. We're paying this, and that, and again, I'm not saying you have to do that, but on a criminal legal standpoint, if you want to be more clear, you could say, "We're maybe willing to do this, but, this needs to go to this, the portion of that person's time," because I think you guys are looking for other funding that's only going to be tourism related.
So that's only, this is only a part of the, the salary for that full-time person, and we are going to other resources for it. But, I understand completely where you guys are, and you really have a lot of work yet to do to produce your guidelines and all that, but it is not outside the realm. I mean, there are other communities that dedicate funding to, they dedicate funding to Main Street programs for exactly this purpose, and also to support, you know, other things that are going on in the community that are sort of related to that sort of thing, but I don't want to get into the weeds about that. You guys have to make your decisions about how you want to do this, and what your guidelines are going to be. And what I would say is, at this point in time, I'm, I think the LCP would be perfectly fine with waiting until you get this all together, and then we can come back and, and make an application again, once you have your, your process put together.
So, that's, can we bring Darwin up to speed for just a second? So, I thought we were going to discuss establishing guidelines. Apparently, we're discussing these items of whether or not we feel they should be approved. I did not think there was any question whether or not they fit into the realm of tourism. I thought we were here to establish guidelines, because that's what we need to do, happily. I was prepared for that, have lots of paperwork for it, I mean, I guess, I think it's our due diligence and our duty to do the research on what is allowed and not allowed, but I want to get these guidelines done, because there's so much, I mean, we're hitting peak season for a lot of events, and these guys need to know what to do. We need an application, we need guidelines, we need, you know, are we going to do matching funds? That kind of stuff. Ray, and Scott were the impression we were discussing these items?
I didn't think that was, no, I didn't think we were discussing these things until Tuesday, which is on the agenda for Tuesday, specifically, by name. What we have on our agenda, which you guys likely adopted right before driving here, is new business lodging tax. So, if we want to have a general discussion on what will fit in the guidelines, and then on Tuesday discuss those things, that's fine. I mean, this is an old item, we don't have this on our agenda today for old item, in discussing those things.
You've got to, you've got to be there, also, which will go into executive session, and that's going to take a while, possibly. And you guys, you and, and Hedland have to leave.
Yeah, but that's not until Friday, we've got an hour and 15 minutes, I'm not sure. All I'm, all I'm saying is, we're going to discuss this list on Tuesday. I don't know why we would not discuss this on Tuesday.
I think it was advertised at the meeting that they, it was advertised at the meeting, because like, from my memory, that today was the day to come in with your request with a work session, that's kind of how...
We've mentioned guidelines numerous times.
Yeah, I, I think that's how a lot of people thought it was, against what Ginger here and everything else.
And what I, what I remember talking about at the last meeting was that, look, we, we only know where our budget is. We don't want to be spending money that we don't know for sure we have. I mean, we want to make sure we get manager in place, that's number one item on everybody's agenda right now. And, these may be legitimate, fall under our tourism, may be absolutely something that this council decides we want to approve, but in the meantime, we don't have the guidelines fully laid out. We, we talked about it over two months ago, about, hey, the burner shows some example, you know, kind of application forms that people could fill out, and then turn it to her, then this council, because we dissolved the committee, would then, this council would then decide on those after seeing an application. I apologize greatly, because this has caused what we're now seeing as a problem, where people are just going to submit a, a request without going through the process, when we and I voted to forego an application and, you know, proactively give to Mike Beeson a, to pay his advertising costs, which I didn't even understand at that time fully were, other than advertising for Occupy E Street, an event that's a tourism event. Not Mike Beeson, him individually as a business owner for his business, but for an event, community-wide, which, well, we have a few of these community-wide events, and that was a major one that I thought, hey, this is a tourism thing. If he's spending out of his own pocket, $1,000 for a whole event, let's pay that. That's where I was at when we, when I made the motion to pay his advertising costs. It wasn't, let's advertise for everybody's businesses individually in a, in a magazine. That is not where I was going at all with that motion that day. You know, we still had, and had previously talked about, the process, committee had been formed, we dissolved that, yes, but we, we still need process, and we still need requests to be submitted, and then to make a ruling on if it falls within tourism for, you know, whatever that might be. But, to me, individual advertisements are not tourism. Like, yeah, that might be in a tourist magazine, but that's, I'm just saying that right now, we're going to talk about another day. But to me, that, that seems like, you're advertising for your business. Now, are we going to start paying $1,000 bills for every business owner in this community that wants to advertise who knows where? That who knows that's actually being seen by? I mean, that's a lot of money. I mean, we might as well give them $1,000 and say, "Have a nice day." That, to me, that $1,000 isn't the best way to go on spending our money.
It'd be awesome for me as a business owner, but I, I don't find it realistic, you know, it's not something I would...
I know, and I don't, I've had conversations with, with, like Jessica McGrath and others on, on this, and I, I understand where the confusion starts, but I take some blame for that, but this is, to me, this needs to be spent differently, and it needs to be spent wisely, and if it maybe comes as a position, that's something, that's a pretty tough decision, that's a, that's a, not a small ask.
And I think that's where the guidelines, because when we were talking about these items, I said, "Well, is there a form that they've filled out? Do we have proof that they've paid these?" I mean, I forgot to ask, we didn't have any of that. And that was, I said, why we said we need to establish guidelines.
Especially with you and I coming in, in the middle of this, personally.
Yeah, I mean, well, there was no money spent, and we're still looking for the budget.
Right.
So, I, I don't know how much more we need to talk about this, we do need to have a work session on truly going over these guidelines, and, you know, I think, and if you want to email that out, have staff just email that out to the group of us, or make copies of it.
So, some of them are actual applications. Now, some of these are set up...
You have one, actual applications.
Nobody can find an application.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, so...
I think she's saying these are samples from other...
These are from other towns. They're, you know, I, I don't believe, I mean, these are really simple things, but why reinvent the wheel if there's one out there? That, let's save time, girls are already busy enough. So, you know, I have sample ones. That's where we have to kind of figure out, what do we want to include on it? Do we want, like, some of these, I mean, Albany is very explicit in exactly where their funds go, and they write down the organizations that they give them to, and that's pretty much within their parameters. And, you know, are we going to do a set amount for any organization here, such as the fairgrounds, or MC Chuck Wagoner, or what else? LCP, that type thing? Or are we going to set percentage of ours aside? We have a 70% used for tourism, but within that, do we want 30% used for advertising? Once that's spent, we're done. You know, do we want 40% used for infrastructure that can be used? Do we want 20% for parks rec? We got to, we got to figure that out. And that's where I thought we were what we want to do, and we need to do it for, I mean, I, I think it's our job, because the committee, whatever reason didn't work out, we voted to stand it, we need to be on it then.
But we need to find out how much we have.
Well, we have some numbers, but, you know, without an audit that's completed from '17, '18 is the one currently going on. We started collecting January of 2018, if I, you know, was it?
I think it was before then, I think, I think.
So that's what we're, and I've been researching this, so that's one of the things that we have to figure out. Roughly what I had the other day was somewhere in the not-quite $70,000. I'm not sure how accurate, yeah, that's, that's our, that's...
Well, that might be what's, what your books are telling you, but the place that would really be able to tell you what they sent you is the state.
Yes, which is where I went today, but I didn't get through, because...
Guys, the state does not collect that for us.
Well, so, we...
We do it, we do, we get it directly. The state is working on getting to that point, but they have a statute that authorizes it, but they have not gotten there yet. And that's something that the council will probably, you guys have talked about wanting, once you can get off out of that, so we're not having to go after receipts ourselves, because that's...
Well, and that's, my understanding is, we have a form that the businesses have to turn in.
Correct.
I thought they turned them into the state or the county.
They turn them into us.
They turn them into us.
They turn them into us.
So we have to have somebody find...
Yes.
So it's the same for the county, they're turning, everybody that's paying a lot of the...
Pays it directly to the county, yes. It eventually, like I said, and if the state is moving towards getting the infrastructure, they've got a statute authorizing it, they just haven't appropriated any money to, with system in effect, just like the state collects from marijuana tax.
Yeah, marijuana tax or alcohol.
Right, exactly, all of those, the, what you guys passed at the last meet, budget, the very end of the June meeting, you know, to adopt the budget, adopt the state revenue share, that's all that, type of stuff, yeah.
So, go ahead, Jim.
Sorry. So I think that, you know, developing the process and deciding, just like Nikki was, was explaining, is the, is the first step. And then the, the form's going to flow out of that, then you won't have any trouble figuring out the form. It's awesome that you've got some examples, because you won't have to reinvent the wheel. You're going to have to tweak something, nothing will exactly fit, or maybe there will be, I don't know. But I think that, I like what you're saying about making a decision about, this is what we're going to do, and you've got lots of examples about what other communities do.
Because all these guys have already paid their bills. I mean, we all know these expenses, there's no reason that they can't wait two, three months. I'm sure they'd love to be reimbursed for their expenses.
Oh, right, right.
But, they've paid that bill with the thought that they were paying that bill, and that was it.
Right, and the bottom line is, we've got to make sure we're doing it correctly, and we're doing it fairly, and that's the bottom line. And we have a paper trail of where this money's going, so if we get audited, we can just say, "Okay, you got this."
And we need to make a wise, you know, we, we need to make a wise process on this. You know, when we ask questions like, "How are you bringing in tourism?", or "Where are you affecting tourism?", is it county, is it town? You know, how is this benefiting businesses? We need to make those decis, you know...
There are policy decisions that you guys should, should, and are within your power to make. I think generally, I think you know what the general parameters are, we keep those to death. So I think it just, if policy decisions you want to make inside that box are, will lift the council, and should be made, and then that way, you're going to be clear about what you want to do and what directions. And that also should maybe limit, or at least streamline, who's coming in, and...
So...
So, can you get us all copies of what you have?
I certainly can, yeah, I have one.
I was going to say, Nikki, why don't you put together packets?
Okay.
For all of us? Let's pick a date, let's go over, and it's going, like I said, it's probably going to take a couple hours.
Yes.
And also make sure it's part of the council packet, so that any member of the public can come in, you know, with the public hearing part of it, be able to address. That way, they can kind of know what you guys are, actually, they have a right to know what you guys are looking at, so...
Because other towns have actually adopted a policy, which is what really we should probably do, not just a...
There's, nobody disagreeing with that at all, we just need to get all of us on the same page, and the same, looking at the same page.
Yeah, we need to look at it, I mean, it'll take some wild reading, though.
So summarize it in a machine.
No, but I will, under code is... No, I haven't figured that out yet.
Yeah, another way of looking at it is, the application is just the vehicle for your process. First, you got to have your process, and then the application brings, brings in what you want to make your decisions.
Yeah.
So, for the sake of time, can we table this now, and then...
Yeah, I think that gives us a good idea of what we're doing.
I have no problem with discussing this at, at the next meeting, or the meeting after that, but just table and keep it on old business, and then we'll get to that.
Yes, we can all get on the same page.
I really like the agenda to keep things as old business as they haven't been completed, and just leave it on the...
Well...
Each agenda, so if we want to talk about it, we can, and if not, then...
The meeting will be at 6:00.
Do we want to add it to a work session that day, since a lot of those...
She's ready right now. I'm just not...
Well, I can't see it.
That's fine, I mean, what day, that's...
Do we want to do like a 4:30, 5:00 work session?
Um, let's do a 4:00 work session, if everybody can make it. You better, because like I said, it's going to take at least a couple hours.
So Dawn is out?
She'll be back Monday.
Okay, so we have a, no, so we need to, and I...
It'll have to be a Wednesday, Thursday, or next.
We can do it, we can have a type, we can type this up, I swear, it is...
Monday is still in our 24 hours, if you did...
Yeah, because you just got to do it for 24.
I'm going to be available Friday night.
Well, I just meant typing it up for public notice, which is super simple. It's really, I mean, I literally just, look. Copy it, that's legal. I mean, technically it is, but...
Delete the date, add any date, put a line in it, we'll be good.
Old school. But no, we can still do a work session Tuesday, we'll have enough time, it's 24 hours.
Tuesday?
Yeah.
Before...
Dawn just happened to have a first thing in the morning, which is fine.
She'll be here, she'll be here Sunday, back, back on Sunday, but work Monday morning.
I will send, she'll get first thing one.
So, but I will, I can call her.
Well, she's off, works, it's off all the time, she can get to it Monday.
Okay. So, we'll table that until Tuesday.
Well, if she has it out Monday morning, we'll be alright, so...
Yep, yep.
All right, you'll have it out Monday morning. Alright. Let's move on down to advertising town manager position.
So, Jeff?
Well, we got, we put in the L O C again, put it in the Lakeview examiner again. Put on the LOC correctly. We made contact with the Running Searchlight, and they had two options they recommended, actually both pretty expensive. One was $1,200 for a month of advertising, one was $1,700. They sent out, I believe Dawn forwarded it to you guys on emails, what you got for your money. It's a lot, but...
So you guys also have the option too, you don't have to keep sticking with one paper. You could do one area, one month, jump to somewhere else, another month. So you kind of covered lots of different areas, and... Right, just, just as an idea, you know, as far as, so you, you might, you can spread it around and cover different geographic areas to try to stay within reach.
So, I would love to use free avenues as well, because I'm all about free, and there's a ton of online groups, I guess, that would be called, for Southern Oregon, for jobs.
She kind of ran out of time, but she was pursuing.
Okay, because I can give her a list, I've done the research on those, she just has to join. I mean, she has to do it, kind of on her private account, I think, would be, I don't think it lets you do it under a business page.
She can't do that private, because it's all, it's public record at that point.
That's the thing, I'm trying to figure out how she could do it. I don't know if the town people just let you do it.
Mary and Jimmy's got a call.
I, I think you can do, indeed, I think it's already on there, wasn't it?
I think it is. Indeed, or somebody mentioned it.
Mentioned it, indeed. There's another one that I can't think of right off the top of my head.
There's Monster and Indeed.
Yeah, that's the one I was going to have. We'll make sure they're on there.
And I've actually hired off of both of them.
What about Mentors?
Mentors was really expensive, I think.
Yeah, The Statesman's was compared, was actually the exact same, eight days in print, 30 days online. And that is what The Statesman had for the same cost. I'm not opposed to running them both, but, I mean, that's a couple thousand dollars. And then the employment department and I are still playing phone tag, so...
Well, I have the...
So, so here's where I'm at, I, I don't want to advertise out of state. There's a couple reasons for that. They don't know Oregon law, which is a little bit different. They can learn it, certainly, and, and there are definitely good candidates out there that run cities, and they can learn. I, I'm not doubting that, but I still would like somebody who's, who knows Oregon law and the mess that we're going through with candidates and all that stuff too, so... That's just me, you guys, I mean, we can spend money however we want, but again, we've got limited funds, we don't know how much funds we have, and...
Well, the thing with Lake of Oregon City, they reach out all over. We had them from Ohio last time.
You know, I, I know we've talked about Ben before, and how much it is up there.
Um, Ben?
I haven't yet sent out to like, some of the contacts that I have, like through planners' networks and stuff like that, who will then disclose it to other county employees, and all that kind of stuff, but there's probably some potential administrators there, where they can know the people too, so we'll send that out, but, you know...
I think the Central Valleys, I mean, the Valley side is a good idea, because there are a lot of people moving this way, as that area gets bigger.
The Statesman?
The Statesman's in Salem, which hits Jeff, I mean, you get it everywhere, that's a pretty much, it's a pretty well, it's almost like a state, it's a paper, I really like.
Oregonian.
Or, that's the, that's the one, yeah.
There's another one, it sounds kind of off a wall, but Capital Press.
That's an ag-ish one, right?
It gets into very rural areas.
That's a good idea, because that's ag-related, I think. So we don't have prices on those, so if you guys can do Capital Press and Oregonian, The Statesman, we pretty much already know.
There's also a professional association of city managers in the state that... There's also a professional association of city managers in the state that would be worth reaching out to as well, to see if they have something to where, there's a posting or something along those lines. Because I know they operate like a listserv and things like that, so that might be another one that may not cost you much, or may not cost you anything, just as an idea.
So I, I, the League of Oregon Cities told me they don't do them on their page anymore, which we do for, for everything, interns, things like that. It is the, I wrote it on the back, what is it, CCMA or something?
Yeah, it's the CCMA.
Yes, and it is free, and that is definitely, they said, simply send LOC the ad, which I was like, well, we already have it with you, can't you just copy and paste? But send them the ad, and they will post it there for free, or we can follow up with that.
I would suggest letting LOC do it for you guys, because they work familiar with the entity.
It was...
That's kind of the, that's the trade group for all city managers in state.
Yes, and so I will get that exact name, or Dawn or Jeff or whoever can call LOC and they'll tell you exactly.
It seems like all these phone calls end up taking an hour and forty-five minutes, and then I take it off, and then they call back, and...
I don't have a problem doing it, I just need permission to do it publicly. So the LOC, that one's super quick.
Well, Dawn's been talking to them for the last, for the last two weeks, off and on.
I just don't want to add to those things.
So she, she's got their phone number?
I don't see there any conflict by counselor like yourself, or yourself, doing these, reach outs to these groups. I, I mean, we're not paying you for your time.
I'm literally just, well, yeah, yeah.
So just do it. I mean, I don't...
I don't see any problem, I don't see any problem with that, as long as you conform the council, you're doing it, and council is not objection.
So I'll call Oregonian Capital Press, the LOC with the management thing, and then we just need to make a decision if we want to do a season.
Yeah, just tell us on Tuesday what the price is. We can start the advertising Wednesday.
I have Statesman's, which is...
Anything that's free, I say go for it, but there's no reason not.
We just have to figure out how, and I can...
See, I will be...
I mean, if I posted like on Facebook or something, obviously, there's no legal...
I mean, I shared the town page on Facebook when we...
That's as far as I would go, unless it...
Yeah, don't kind of respond, don't respond to that on that, or just say, apply here, and then...
Yeah, but the, but anything through the official, I don't know if the town has an official Facebook page or not.
Yes, they do.
Do you?
They have a town Facebook page.
Then it should be posted on there, that kind of thing.
It was at one point, I think, and then maybe somebody points the link to the website.
Right.
See, I'll be going to the mayor's conference the end of this month, first party next, next month. We're all good for four days.
Wear a shirt that someone can make up for you, that says, "Apply here for town manager." Take a read, take a picture.
I know, gal, no, we could do that. Ask me about a town manager position.
Walk around if that can be...
That would be funny.
From back.
So The Statesman is, um, and these prices, you know, mind you, of course, they, they give you prices and say it's the deal of the week or whatever, so, these were two weeks ago. A thirty-day online package and a quarter, or twenty-fourth page, which I believe is similar to what they gave us here.
It's a standard size.
Yeah, is normally six oh seven, and that's for eight days. Four fifty-one on sale, not sure if that's still good. That gives you eight days on a paper and thirty days online. This still includes the US Today Job Network, CareerBuilder.com, and other job boards.
And that is something, this is a side note, you guys want to consider while you're doing this, is any of the papers that have connections with any of that kind of stuff, should be something you should be looking at. Because that does get you, that'll get you some nationwide exposure without paying much extra, because there are a lot of papers that are part of larger groups.
I believe that's the same rate the Herald News is charging.
It's pretty similar, yeah. So if we want to go ahead, if one of The Statesman's won, I can get that done? Or if you guys want to wait till Wednesday to do all of them and make decisions, or what?
You can't make decisions today during work session, so it's got to be...
Oh, that's true.
It's got to be Wednesday meeting.
Well, this break, Joel, yeah.
Wednesday.
On Tuesday.
Tuesday, Wednesday.
Just have them all list out, and then you can wrap up the package.
I'll get updated rates, because that's probably obligated.
Yeah, if you have planning update, you're...
And in the meantime, you need three still ways, and not, like I said, all of the town planners network. You won't be telling managers no stuff.
Do we have any more on that? Okay, we will adjourn regular session at four thirty-six.